Six thirty-six. That one's two minutes past two.
Good evening. We welcome you here to the Reagan Meeting West Valley City Council. We're ready to begin. We're starting a little bit late. Our study meeting for the items we'll be discussing next week went a little bit long. Some exciting things happening which we wanted to discuss. We note that all four council members are here. It's a full quorum. And with that, we'll go to our opening ceremony. Councilman Tom.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the council members asked me to sing a song today, but I think it's not the right time to sing a song, so I do a little Latin lesson today with you guys. Please just stand up and do with me. Appreciate that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
No elected officials, no scout troops. So we'll go to our minutes of February 4th. Property force, any comments? Okay, y'all in favor say aye. If those opposed say no, pass unanimously. Minutes are approved. Our comment period, I didn't see. Someone signed that. Okay. No one signed up to speak. Is there anyone here specifically to speak? If you're here for the public hearing on our residential sustainability or for the property at forty-one fifty-five South, six thousand west, we will have separate public input for those. So, anyone here to speak? Yes, sir.
I thought it had already been pulled up, so I did sign. Jim D. Sock, five four nine one, West Lockwood Drive, West Valley City. On December fourth, I submitted a grammar request. After Mr. Morris's code enforcement presentation in the study meeting, I talked to the city manager. He told me that all that information should be easily available. The grammar request I got was a bunch of unverifiable numbers and only part of what I requested. I sent three emails back, have not heard anything. I sent a second grammar request for code enforcement courtesy notice. I get this back. Once again, I sent a couple emails back explaining that this can't be the courtesy notices because it's lower than the number of violations that were issued. In Mr. Morris's presentation, he said that seventy-five percent of the courtesy notices do not lead to a notice of violation. So that leads to twenty-five percent, or three thousand six hundred and sixty-seven. Well, the number that they said for courtesy notices was three thousand eighty-three. How can this number be lower when it takes a courtesy notice to be issued, resent out first before you notice the violation? It's impossible. So, somebody's putting out the false information. What is the city trying to hide? Some real numbers, using Mr. Morris's numbers, once again, it's not fourteen percent. Doing the simple smarter and fifth grade math, if the courtesy notices that he said, the three thousand six hundred and sixty-seven is twenty-five percent, then the real number is fourteen thousand six hundred and sixty-eight, which puts it at forty-eight point eight-nine percent of properties visited by code enforcement had violations. Courtesy notices are issued for a violation on a property and should be included in the numbers because a notice of violation isn't issued unless the courtesy notice is already given. Why aren't those numbers available?
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no further public comments, we'll close that. Bring it back to here, our assistant city manager, Mr. Isaac. Any comments?
No, sir.
Council members.
May I say something? I appreciate Jim D. Sock and people here tonight, and thank you for your information. But you know what I learned? I heard your story. I heard one side of your story, but I want to hear other side of story in our city. When I came over here and my family in Oregon, they took me in and they taught me well. He said, Tom, it's a new country now. It's a good turning. He said, Tom, it's a new country now. When you say something, you have your fact to back you up, and you have to hear both sides of the story so you can make a good judgment for yourself. Don't go into the scenario, he says and she says, don't, Tom, don't please. And I appreciate your information, but I want to hear both sides of the story and to make good judgment for myself. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move forward on our agenda. We will first look at application ZT dash fifteen dash twenty nineteen filed by the city for a zone text change to create the residential sustainable zone, sustainability zone. We will include with that ordinance twenty dash oh six for the same purpose.
Oh, they'd have to stop talking.
I don't have a ringtone like that, so... With that, there's quite a bit involved with this, and there's some changes to promote sustainability. So the concept is, how can we build a better city, including some issues that provide energy sustainability and similar things in our ordinances? And so a number of changes have been proposed, including such things as, you know, the energy efficiency and insulation in a home, water heaters, solar panels, even in the landscaping to look at issues that would reduce the amount of water needed. Those are some of the items. We have quite a list of those that are proposed in our ordinance change. We even had some last minute issues that we're still looking at to try and make this as comprehensive as we can, but still be relatively reasonable in our ordinances with what is proposed to come forward. And I could pull that up. I'm only remembering a few of those, but just so people are aware of those. Oh, I didn't mention high efficiency gas furnishes, Energy Star rated appliances, water sense features on faucets and showerheads, and as I mentioned, landscaping, water sense irrigation, and just looking at issues to make them more efficient, as well as the size of units and so forth. So those are some of the issues that are involved with this. There are quite a few. We've had those out on the, our website, certainly as our backup materials for our agenda tonight. I don't know how many might be here to speak on this particular issue. We'll find out. And if we need to go into any of those in detail, or other issues that are included in the documentation, we will do so. With that introduction, then, anything else we ought to mention in the introduction that was critical, that you felt ought to be mentioned? If not...
I would say a couple of words, Mayor.
Sure.
Include solar power, drip irrigation, all kinds of things. But what we're looking at is, we're not imposing this upon anybody or saying in this part of the city, this is how houses are going to be built. We're looking at this as an opportunity for people that are very conscientious about these things and will pay a little extra to have a home that incorporates all these things, car chargers in the garage, I mean, a whole list of things that will create, we want to be able to have a place for them to come and have those things. And I think that's kind of the way that things are made in the future. We want to be out in front of that and not just have, be built out without an opportunity for these kinds of houses in our city. So this would be an opportunity for a developer to apply for this zone and then receive this zone, develop a community, a number of homes with all of the economies of scale of doing a subdivision or a large subdivision rather than just one home, and then be able to bring these kinds of homes into our city, of which there are a few, if any, at this night. So it's to provide variety and additional housing opportunities within our city for the great diversity of people that we have and want to have living here.
Thank you. Good point. With that, then, seeing no further comments, we'll open it for public comment. Is there anyone here to speak to this? Yes, please come forward. State your name and address and go from there.
Chris Bell, forty-one thirty Middle Park. I want to speak in favor of this. I want to commend the city leadership for a lot of the projects we've been doing for the last year or so that I've been coming here and seeing some of the sustainability measures that the city has implemented through purchasing of vehicles, renovations at the Margaret Center, getting electric chargers for vehicles here, and giving the residents of our city more options, especially future residents of our city. We passed a resolution last year to help us get to net zero emissions. And this is something else that just will continue to help our residents, will build up our city, will make us look to be an example for the rest of the state of what we can do to provide for the future, our children's future, our grandchildren's future, future generations. This is something that's good. It gives people the option. It's not forcing them. Gives them the option to do this. And I want to thank you for your leadership on this and ask you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to this?
Certainly come forward.
Danny Gutierrez, ten seventy-eight, Gadsburg Drive, Sandy, Utah. Chris, well said. I think you guys are doing a fantastic job when it comes to this. I've been following this very closely for the last five or six months. I've really looked into it to see what we can, and I say we, because I'd like to be one of the first ones in the city to build this out, but I look at this and say, hey, is this effective? Are we going to be able to build it? And I think we are very, 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 very close. I've been reaching out to Steve Pastorek and talking to him a lot over the last couple of weeks to make sure that we're not leaving anything out. And so I just want to let you guys know that I think you're on to something. I feel like it's going to be an example for the entire state. I think in the next ten to fifteen years, we'll see that homes that are smaller, that have less yard, that are more sustainable, will be very effective. We're, you know, we're running out of land in this valley, and if we continue to build these big giants and have these large lots, we're not going to be able to accomplish a lot. So I really love it. The only thing I would ask, and we met with Steve yesterday in the planning department, is that we really look at each, if we're going to put something across and put it in writing, I think we need to look at each section of the zone and make sure that we're not making it too difficult to achieve. We talk about insulation. You know, we've got to be realistic as to what we can achieve as a home builder, as a developer. And so I would ask the city council to potentially table this, and let's look at four or five of these items. We're very, 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 very close. But, you know, when it comes to solar panel, are we, you know, we're naming a Tesla solar panel in the letter that's out there. Can we really name a specific vendor for a type of solar panel or a type of shingle? I would really question whether we should do that. Maybe we open it up and say, hey, it may be a little more flexible for everybody to say, we want to achieve a certain savings, not get rid of it, but let's try to achieve a certain kilowatts that we want to save. You know, I was telling somebody out here earlier, you know, my family, we've got four kids, we've got a hot tub, we've got, you know, a little bit bigger home, but I don't think I'm as energy efficient as other homes because my kids don't turn off the lights. And so we can try to achieve a goal of being self-sustaining, but if all my kids aren't turning off all the lights and we have things that are running a lot more often than other people have because we have so much traffic and craziness happening in our house, you know, how can we set this goal and not really be able to achieve it? So four or five items, I think if we can address those, I think we're there. So, thank you.
Well, I was going to say, we listened to the comments from the planning commission, and we did change the specifically named to that or equal to, so it can be different vendors. We did up the minimum or the maximum amount of property from five acres to ten acres because we understood the streets and different things like that. So I think we're moving forward too well.
Yeah, totally agree.
And so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak? Can't decide if you're just stretching or, oh, you're coming far.
Mayor Council, Ken Mill, Arcadia Builders. Just really a quick comment, just to echo what's been said already. We would be extremely supportive of this. This would be very progressive for the city and for the county. We feel there'll be a need for that in any place in this county, but this would be a great place to start, and we would be, just based on the tweaks that you've already made, would be acceptable to us. We think we could sustain that. So whether you vote tonight or in two weeks from now, we would be hopefully one of the first builders, developers to do it. So we're kind of excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comments? Seeing none. Then we'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for further discussion or action.
I can make another comment, Mayor. And I appreciate the comments that were made here today. We're kind of launching off in uncharted waters. We didn't have a model really to use for this, and so we're trying to encompass everything and make good decisions. But as I think with most, if not all, development, if we make a mistake on this and there's some requirement that just doesn't fit or doesn't make sense when someone wants to apply for this a year or two down the road, or whenever that may be, my advice would be, come and tell us. I mean, it's our ordinance. We can change it. We can fix it, and we can make it work if we, you know, some new technology or something else is going to make it better in the future. We want to be able to accommodate you. We're not so stuck on any particular requirement, and we won't all be in these same seats in a few years. And this is trying to create a new thing and a partnership, and we don't always have the expertise and we're not always as clear-wynder we need to be to know what's needed in the future. But we do want to bring this option and opportunity for other people. We heard from the public today, we heard new things in our study meeting, and we may not be ready to pass something tonight, but we are still trying to get something on paper that we think will encourage development and hopefully not just discourage everybody and make them think, well, this is too hard. We're not going to even talk about it anymore. At least that's my perspective.
I take along with Steve Builder. I know this is kind of an adventure, but at least we opened our mind, and we want to do the best for our city. So just like he says, you know, we very much, we are learning, and you can comment to give us the feedback. First, I, my decision to go only five acres, that my personal opinion. I said, well, because we opened up star new thing here, but, you know, we could go just slowly and try to see how if they turn out okay, we can go to a hundred miles per hour. But all my callers said, well, let go ten. I think they convinced me go ten, so I'm okay with that. Yeah.
Any others? Maybe just, oh, go ahead.
I'm very excited about this sustainability zone, and it's very encouraging to have the developers say that they're interested. And I hope that you'll continue and stay with this and work with this, and we can work with you to make this work. This is a great thing. So thank you for your support and encouragement. We're almost ready to get this passed, I think. And so I'd like to make a motion that we study this just a little bit more and then bring it to a future meeting, and so that we continue this until, is it next week that we decided we will? So that's the motion to continue this to next week.
Second.
Do some work on some amendments to make this better.
Okay, that's properly before us. Just for disclosure, some of the information that was received from developers has been incorporated here, but we did discover, for example, a question on only a tankless water heater that may be heat pump. There are some flexibilities that maybe we ought to bring in there as well on the landscaping, some additional items. We want to make this work. Would rather try and fix as many of those items as we can now and see where we go from there. So our staff has made the commitment to put this together, the items that were discussed, we think, in time for our next meeting. And so we're going to work very hard on that. If not, we could, we always have the option even of continuing it one more week, but we think we'll be pretty close to passing that. So, any further comments? Seeing none. To our city recorder then, for the roll call vote.
Councilman Pitysmanu?
Aye.
Councilman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norco?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion for continuance is approved.
Okay. Next, we'll go to application Z dash four dash twenty nineteen filed by Bahid Sagdeki. Close. With the change in zone from manufacturing to R one eight for property located at forty-one fifty-five South, six thousand west. In conjunction with this, we will also consider ordinance twenty dash oh seven for the zone change and resolution twenty dash fifteen for the development agreement. This is approximately point eight-six acres of property. That's the proposal before us. Anything else we ought to add before we open public comment? Okay, with that, then, is there anyone here to speak to this application? Seeing none. Seeing none, then we'll close the public input, and we will come back to the council for any further comments or motions.
Mayor, it's four. It's proposed to be four residential lots in an area basically surrounded by residential lots, and with that, I would move for approval of ordinance twenty dash oh seven.
Second.
Any further comment on that, then, to our city recorder?
Councilman Norco?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Go ahead.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Pitysmanu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Still with the council?
Mayor, I'd like to approve of resolution twenty dash fifteen.
Second. Any further comments on the development agreement? Mr. Isaac, did you have a comment?
We did the ordinance first.
We did. We did the ordinance.
You did.
So seeing no further comments, to our city recorder.
Councilman Pitysmanu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norco?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. With that, then, we go to our resolutions. We'll begin with resolution twenty dash sixteen. Okay. Resolution twenty dash fifteen, this is to enter into a development agreement, excuse me, an interlocal cooperation agreement between our city and the county for the purchase of aerial photography. This photography that we use every so often is six thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars, and this is used in a lot of the things that we need. And so this will include licenses as well as the photography that must be purchased. With that, then, we've done this before, similar type thing, and we'll continue using this. Seems to work pretty well for a number of things that we use in the city. With that, then, to the council.
Mayor, I'd like to approve our resolution twenty dash one six.
Second. Property force, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Norco?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Pithus Manu. And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have resolution twenty dash seventeen, and this is to authorize the purchase of a maintenance sweeper and a scrubber. Both of these will be purchased from Intermountain Sweeper. The cost of the two is one hundred and seven thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Two of them are similar in price, but these are to use in the parking garage that will be opening up through the garage of dirt and debris, and scrub automotive oil and chemicals on garage floor. It's also used in other places, so these will help us in keeping that facility in top shape. With that then, to the council.
Move for approval of resolution twenty dash seventeen. Second.
Any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Pithus Manu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Northout.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have resolution twenty dash eighteen. This is to execute a cost-sharing inter-local agreement between our city and Magna Water District. There is a road beneficial to both of us at sixty-seven fifty west. This roadway project funding will come from Magna Water District for a portion of that road. They have their drinking water treatment plant there, and this will be for public use. It'll be a public road. Will also access facilities that the city will have there at the end of that road as well. With that introduction, it's a hundred and fifty-eight thousand five hundred and three dollars to the council.
Move for approval of resolution twenty dash eighteen.
I was going to say, I'm not going to turn down a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars all set.
Any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Northout.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Pithus Manu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Then we have resolution twenty dash nineteen. This is for three easement agreements between our city and Rocky Mountain Power for storm drain facilities, and these are a part of, you know, the work that we are going on in association with Mountain View Corridor. This will relate to the Hunter Park Storm Water Detention Basin and related facilities along there where their power transmission corridor is. And so with these then, to the council.
I move for approval of resolution twenty dash nineteen.
Any further comments? Seeing none, then to our city recorder.
Councilman Pithus Manu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Northout.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That completes our agenda for tonight. We thank you all for coming, and with that, we'll adjourn until next week, so a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. We are adjourned.
Let me turn this off so I'm not disclosing medical information on... Push that red button right there.